I think the bottom is that.
I would say, hopefully, a little too much attention.
Yeah.
Wait. Where am I?
You let your hair grow. You have to.
I'm actually good. I could look everywhere at the town.
No, it's my idea.
Is this where some folks are?
I'm sorry.
I did. I'm sure you are. I did. What are you on with, Justin? Were there any?
There's none of us.
How are you? All right. I like the highlight. I didn't print them all out.
So why do you show like?
Hey, I'm a little upset. You just had to reach for your phone. I didn't get one.
You didn't ask for it. The new mayor did. That's not, that's not exactly. We got you a full-size laptop. Some got galaxies. Some got galaxies. I think four got iPads. Three got galaxies.
I don't know.
I have, I have a station. Pretty. Years. And then, uh, our. Are we going to take them or? Are we going to take them? 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 Hey, I'm, I'm a little upset. You just, you just had to reach for your phone. I didn't get one.
You didn't ask for it. The new mayor did. That's not, that's not exactly. We got you a full-size laptop. Some got galaxies. Some got galaxies. I think, I think four got iPads. Three got galaxies.
I don't know. I've been. I have, I have a station. Pretty. Years. And then, uh, are we going to take them? 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 Uh, I have, I have a station. Pretty. Years. And then, uh, are we going to take them? 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 Are we going to take them?
Thank you for your questions. I had to change nine slides because. Robert Gerald, near the ambulance. Coincidentally, that's where his spot. That's what he changed to. Everybody. Right back. All right. Should we take this off for the roll call? Should we take slide two off for the roll call? Do I need to do that or do you do it? So I'll just leave final.
David, you ready?
Um.
Should we take slide two off for the roll call? Do I need to do that or do you do it? So I'll just leave final. Oh. It did. Yeah. Yeah. Do you have the names? 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 Dave, you ready?
Um.
I think we probably forgot to dial. We can just smack your name tag if you remember what it was on it. I see you as a head one.
All right. I think we're about ready to get started here. So let me welcome everyone tonight to our meeting. And in the absence of Mayor Rock, I've been asked to. Mayor Rock is attending. I'd like to call the order of the meeting then and we'll begin with the roll call.
Matt Barber is absent excuse. Corey Brewster.
Here.
Steve Clemmons.
Here.
David Glab.
Here.
Nicole Howard.
Here.
Jeanette Hulse is absent excuse. Molly King.
Here.
Max Colto.
Here.
Mary Ann Meesner.
Here.
Roxy Okelvey.
Here.
Justin Rock.
Here.
Denise Wheeler.
Here.
Joya Wong is absent.
I am here.
Are there any adjustments or amendments to the agenda that we need to discuss?
No, there are not, but just as a reminder, your microphone that is attached to your lapel, hopefully, if you put your hand over it, it just means you won't be getting germs on it while everybody at home can hear exactly everything that you say. So if you want to say something to your neighbor or if you want to just kind of have a conversation with yourself, which I'm prone to do, take your microphone off and set it down, that would probably be the best way to go. And don't forget to unhook it when you stand up. Generally, we have at least one person that forgets, puts their hand over the microphone. Sometimes that can be embarrassing and there's always someone that forgets and it's usually me when I stand up. So with that, I'll play back to you.
Okay. So we'll ask for any declarations of conflict of interest.
Okay, we do have one from Mayor Rock and because he's virtual, we're going to go ahead and have the city recorder bring that into the record.
Justin is declaring a potential conflict of interest because the city of La Grande has competitively awarded contracts for towing services, which may include a business in which Justin has an interest that could receive payments from the city of La Grande's general fund budget or other city budgets. Justin does not believe this potential conflict of interest will influence his decisions regarding the city's budgets and that he can remain impartial. Therefore, Justin will be participating in the discussion and voting on the city's general fund budget. Justin is declaring a potential conflict of interest. Justin has a potential conflict of interest for the city's enterprise and other funds budgets because Justin owns a business that potentially does business with the public works department. Based on the potential for tire sales to public works in the future, he will not participate in the discussion or the vote on any of the enterprise and other funds budgets.
But he will be participating in the urban renewal budget. And does anybody want to challenge the right of any counselor or budget committee member to hear the record rules like that?
Before then, with the election of a chair, and I would, I would like to nominate to the right to Steve Clemmons to serve as chair.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Upstand.
And that being, I will turn the time over to you, Nancy.
Excellent. So it looks like the public hearing on the city's urban renewal district budget is now open. And with that, before we, well, I guess we can, we're going to cover this one pretty probably this evening, right? I would like to ask, probably about 7:30, I'll call for a short break so people can get up and move around a little bit, do what they need to do, and then we'll come back. But we may be done with urban renewal by that time. Could we have budget message and review, please?
Thanks very much, members of the budget committee. Good evening and again, thank you for participating. You received a rather lengthy packet that included the urban renewal agencies budget towards the city's general fund budget, enterprise budget, and other funds, but for this portion of the hearing, your focus is solely on the urban renewal agencies budget. We did receive quite a few questions in advance and I very much appreciate those. I'm going to go ahead and take this time to touch on the urban renewal specific questions that were asked. These were provided to all of the budget committees and they are posted on the city's website. The first one was, how will the new traded sector business call for projects? Business attraction incentive be the same or different than the two previous programs that existed? Why are we moving to these, this merged structure? The incentive is available to qualifying projects located anywhere within the district, but they have certain requirements, particularly to get the higher level of funding for the traded sector. It actually has to be a traded sector business. It has to generate a certain number of family wage jobs and the participation is a one-third, two-third, which is a little bit different. So minimum project for a traded sector, $750,000. And we developed kind of a matrix for preferential points that show kind of a combination of investment versus job creation to determine what those funding thresholds would be that are in the, the policy. For the projects located at the business park that are not traded sector, they'll essentially be treated exactly the same way as they currently are under the traded, under the call for projects program. The criteria is the same. The difference is for both the, both the traded sector and the business park ones, they're not on the same funding cycle as call for projects. Call for projects is a once a year competitive program. For businesses that qualify for this new program, those applications can be reviewed at any time during the year and the ceiling on the funding is much higher. We combined the carried forward dollars from current business park call for projects allocation, which was 225,000, and the 200,000 that's been sitting in the traded sector. So that's the ceiling for the current fiscal year's budget because those dollars are currently allocated. We do not have any applications for those pending and the proposed budget carries that full 425 over into the next year with no additional funding. So that's kind of the differences between the programs. We're also asked about measurable outcomes or goals that you are striving to achieve. For example, do we, do we tie it to businesses attracted, number of jobs created, dollars of new tax revenues? The answer to that is, you know, the goals we're trying to achieve are those that are contained in the urban renewal plan that was put in place in 1999. We don't have specific objectives or goals such as number of jobs created or new jobs in the district that we strive for each year. Essentially, that's we have programs in place to try to encourage that and through those programs, try to influence the allocation of those dollars to those that best suit the needs and fit the goals and objectives of that urban renewal plan. But we don't say we want to set as a, as a requirement or a target to do 10 jobs. In the past, we had used job creation as one of the preference points, but we found that that was really kind of difficult because we didn't have any clawbacks if they didn't actually create the jobs. That's not the case with the, the new traded sector iteration, but for the call for projects there's not. And then again, what we're seeing with our, our different programs are they're public-private partnerships. There's always a cash contribution for our current existing programs and in most cases, it's a minimum 50/50 match with the exception of the traded sector, which is a one-third agency to two-thirds private investment. And then we were asked what the principal and interest payments were for that are in the urban renewal. These are different than the debt service and these are shown as a resource and there are payments that were received from the urban renewal business assistant loan program that we put together in 2016 and we still have three active loans there. And as a side, we did not use tax increment revenues for that program because that would not be allowed. We used it, we used other urban renewal assets to do that. For example, dollars from property sales are not tax increment dollars and could be used for that. The next question, we have, you know, $1.2 million carried over to 2024 in the proposed budget for planned projects. And the comment was, it seems that we're not spending the money, so perhaps we don't have a need for urban renewal this size. And what more can urban renewal do for La Grande and is it time to sunset the district? And there was just a notation that we had paid 249,254 in principal and interest last year. So the funds carried forward from the prior years are either for projects that are approved but not yet completed and that's 182,000 and change that's there. The rest of the dollars are actually allocated to the 1.35 million dollars in program funding. And so we do have those available because we didn't use all of those funds. The most significant dollar amount there is the $500,000 agency initiated project that we still haven't made a final decision on as an agency. And then the $425,000 for the traded sector business park. In regards to whether or not it's time to sunset the district, that was a discussion of the agency during and subsequent to the retreat and the agency position was it is not time to sunset the agency. The next question was.
Father, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
What you just found. I was just wondering in that, because I meant to ask that question earlier, is what does like the smokehouse have to still do for their, that's part of the 182,000 that's out?
Yeah, in your budget, it identifies for each one, how much is being carried forward. When Timothy is up here, he can answer the what's still left on those. We'll do that, we'll during, do that during the staff portion.
Okay, I'll wait then.
Sure. And then there was a question about how much is owed on the projects combined and, and are there any early penalty payoffs in your packet? It lists the date, the current amount and the date that the debt will be paid off. But for those watching it on, the business park is 495,000. The Adams Avenue streetscape is about 1.1 million and the big H is 585,000 for a total of 2,264,570. Currently, we could pay off the big H and the bond for the Adams Avenue streetscape without penalty. In January of 2026, we would be able to pay off the, the 2018 bond for the business park without penalty. Keep in mind that the reduction to maximum indebtedness occurred when this debt was taken out. So if we were to pay off these earlys, we would pay off this debt early, we would save the interest. That in, those interest payments do not count against maximum indebtedness. So really, the question is one of cash flow. If we were to take 585,000 to pay off the business park, we would have to come up with that in cash, which would then either reduce the number of capital projects we would do or we would reduce the amount of money we could under levy. So the trade-off is the cash flow piece. And then we were asked about the urban renewal economic development department. In the urban renewal agencies budget, it talks about the PSNL item and also an M.
PSNL.
I don't know how to say that little and sign. So those are the personnel lines that are in the economic development department budget that pays for a third of the admin support position and 70% of the economic development professional. The materials and services, all of that is the portion of work that goes into running the urban renewal agency, day-to-day economic development efforts. I think the Main Street downtown, 25,000 is actually expensed out of that line, so we expense them out of those lines. One of the things that we did catch, thank you, Mary Ann, 35,000 of the 193 that's in that economic development budget is actually general fund dollars that was allocated there a couple of years ago in the advertising line that's been carried forward for promotional activities that we would do for properties outside of the urban renewal district that wouldn't be eligible for urban renewal funding. That 35,000 was appropriately included as part of the proposed budget there, but where we made the error was we didn't reduce the transfer amount for the, I'm sorry, the fee charges for services from urban renewal to the city's general fund. So we essentially artificially, in the proposed budget, had allocated 35,000 more in expenses than we should have. On the desk when you got here, there were revised charts that make all of the changes related to that. And by moving that 35,000, it reduced the amount of revenue coming into the general fund, which changes the city's general fund by 35,000 in appropriate fund balance, changes the amount of the transfer between the urban renewal debt fund and general fund. So really, it, it just brings an extra 35,000 in the urban renewal budget compared to what was in your book that you got. And it reduces the amount of revenue to the city's general fund by 35,000, but the expense side was correct and we would not have moved those dollars if there was not an expense that allocated them. So thank you for catching that. It was a little hectic for somebody redoing several charts to get those together. And so as a result of that, when we get to the point for a motion, it will be for this budget as amended and that would include any other changes that you may make because typically it's as presented or as amended, but because of those changes from what we originally published, we think it's more appropriate for that to be as presented. So now sliding to kind of the what we're doing tonight. We did not receive any requests for virtual public comments. And comments this evening will only be related to urban renewal. Comments on the city budgets will be heard tomorrow night. And so what we're going to do is we'll walk through the urban renewal budget. You've already done the organization. I'll do the budget message. We'll then open it up for public comments and then Timothy will join up here and we'll field any questions that you may have. Then you'll deliberate and then make a motion regarding the budget. Once that's done, we'll either take our break then, but we'll then move into the city of La Grande budget and you'll get a much longer presentation and we'll get, see how far we get and continue on to tomorrow night. So you received in your packet, the budget message and probably the most important elements of the budget message is we're looking at, again, doing an under levy. We're funding our core economic development programs as is the urban renewal agencies guidance received at the retreat. And we're essentially keeping status quo on the funding levels for all of our programs. And that translates to 1,350,000 of available capital improvement project dollars. 75 of that is the facade improvement program. 425 is that kind of revised traded sector call for projects for the business park. 500,000 for the agency identified. $500,000 for the agency identified project, and then $350,000 for the call for project, which is currently out, and we're receiving applications for that. The urban renewal agency consists of two funds. One is their general fund, and this is the fund where they actually do the expenditures. And here's where you have the dollar amounts allocated for the various projects. That $182,000 is broken out. And again, the notation about the change reflecting that $35,000 that did not have to come in renewal. And so as you see these, if you see a red number in the column, all of those are going to be related to that $35,000 change. So this is what the general fund looks like, pretty close to what we had current year, not much change there. The urban renewal debt fund, this is where we pay the bonds from. This is also where we receive the property taxes. And again, we want to keep about a $250,000 minimum fund balance. We will actually exceed that in the urban renewal budget. Steve?
I'm assuming we can ask a question?
Yeah, I want to, let me get through this, and then I'll pull Timothy up here, and we'll go back, because I want to also be able to do public comments if there are any firsts, and then we'll have staff up, because if there are, then there may be a question that staff would answer, and that way we don't have to go back and forth.
All righty.
Speaking of the decision to under levy, under Oregon law, we are required to provide notice to the taxing jurisdictions that are impacted by a potential under levy, and these are the figures that we provided to them. We did not receive any feedback, formal objections or anything from the taxing jurisdictions. My senses and from talking to them over the years, they appreciate the additional dollars that they can put to good use. So we are again going to levy in order to get around $950,000 of revenue into the urban renewal district coffers. And for the city of La Grande, that translates to $422,000 of dollars that would otherwise be going to the urban renewal agency. And without major projects, they would just be sitting in the fund balance. And so that is the end of the presentation part. Now, I think, is the time on the agenda to receive public testimony, if there is any, and then after that, we'll be happy to answer questions you may have regarding the budget.
Okay. So anyone here from the public could like to ask questions or comments about the urban renewal district budget? Proposed budget.
Proposed. You have to bring your own chair to this conversation.
Not seeing anybody? We'll see Timothy's up for questions. Any questions for Timothy?
Questions for Timothy?
Can you say, can you tell us what does, oh, I'm sorry. Can you tell us what, I know what frontline, front office, they haven't finished all of their project, I realize that, but I was wondering about, in Bonham Camp, I understand them, but the Smokehouse, what do they still have to do?
So, all of these projects have struggled with a number of issues over the last year, namely contractor availability. So we are working, meeting pretty regularly with Front Office Solutions. They have not yet started on the removal of the rock facing of the building of the auto. They're still working on the roof and HVAC elements that have been delayed significantly due to contractor issues. Bonham Camp Building is actively working on the conversion of the second floor to housing. She has been slowed down a little bit because some of the required access issues and code compliance with the new entrance coming off the side expanded the scope of that work. We are also working with her to identify additional revenue sources that might assist with that project, particularly as she moves up to floor three and four. The Smokehouse got out of the gate really quickly, got some of the exterior work, particularly the repaving of the parking lot done, and then has really struggled to sort of just get contractors in to work on that. I did speak with them probably about a month ago. They're anticipating they'll be done at some point in July with those interior pieces. And then the local station, that's actually a carryover from previous year, and we're really just waiting for the very last 10% of that project, which is some of the remaining tin panels. And again, that is the owner negotiating with his subcontractor, trying to find time to get that project completed. We will see that coming up in this year's budget, I would anticipate as well. And while it's not germane specific to the budget, one of the trends we are seeing is that most of our incoming call for projects are projecting an 18-month to two-year window for completion because of some of those same challenges.
Okay, thank you.
I think this question's probably for Robert, but on the debt fund-
Yeah.
-under current property taxes, you budgeted last year $950,000, and you're estimating $865,000. That's almost 10% less than, so are we waiting for collections?
We budgeted, are you talking about the receipts?
Yes, the estimated amounts for 2023.
Current year?
No, for, yeah, for 2023.
Yeah, I don't know exactly where we are right now.
Okay, but you're still waiting for collections?
Oh, yeah, yes.
All right.
Yeah, and if we don't get them, we also have us, also, I think, on that one, no, the second line down is the delinquent one. So you can see in that one, we had budgeted 25, and we're estimating 40, so.
Okay, all right.
I have a question.
Okay, go Corinne, and then we'll go to Max.
So Timothy, how much private funding did we bring in associated with the urban renewal dollars?
So for call for projects, those typically require a minimum 50% match. So we basically would match minimum dollar for dollar. I do not have those numbers for individual projects in front of me today, but we know that a number of those projects, like the Bonham Camp project in particular, the Elks Building, Evermine Labels, a number of those projects, the private sector match far exceeded the 50% required. So I would be happy to make a note and bring that information.
Yeah, just a curious.
Anything else? Max?
Great, thank you. I'm still getting my head around the merger of those two funds. If I understood correctly, the traded sector one, one of the criteria for awarding grants was job creation. Did I understand that correctly?
Yes.
So will merging these reduce the amount, the proportion of the money that is awarded based on creating job creation?
No, so there's a minimum requirement for job creations, and I believe it's three jobs, and we've actually indexed that up to the current family wage number in the policy. And then within that framework, we developed a matrix that identifies if you're doing five jobs and $900,000, the amount of dollars that you're eligible for is X. If you're doing the minimum of three, but you're doing a $5 million project, it goes up. So we worked with the URAK on that and came up with what we thought was a pretty good kind of a slope to mix the job creation with the private investment to get up to a $500,000 maximum award under that program. Currently, we're, we have 425, and we're requesting to carry that forward into next year, and we're not requesting any new money for that.
But merging the programs won't affect how much money is awarded based on the matrix that you just described?
It would, so under the old program, the maximum for the traded sector was $200,000, and the maximum under the business park specific for a city-owned, or, sorry, an agency-owned lot or a large lot was $100,000. This actually takes for the traded sector up to $500,000 if there's that much money available. So it really provides a much more substantial incentive for traded sector new construction.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Question? Okay, right, discussion among the budget committee. This usually goes pretty quickly.
It does, sir.
Three straight following programs are established by the urban renewal agency. Seems like you've got a good budget going for this year. All right, close the questions to the public here on the proposed urban renewal district budget, and I will entertain a motion.
I move that the urban renewal district certified to the county a request that $52,837,070, is that correct?
It is.
In the increment value be used for the purpose of dividing taxes, and that the urban renewal district budget for fiscal year 2023, 2024 be approved as amended, and further that it be forwarded to the urban renewal agency for consideration and adoption during its regular session on June 7, 2023.
Second, one second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition?
Thank you.
We have one more vote, it looks like. No, ask for the votes, wait, wait a second. So on my second page, am I confused here?
It should be on number 12, adjourn the budget committee to consider the-
We've skipped the journey, and we've already done everything that we needed to do. All right, so we're going to adjourn the budget committee to consider approval of the budget committee minutes during the agency's regular session on June 7, 2023. So all those members of the public budget committee, please show up on the second. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dave?
We're going to go ahead and move forward to the general enterprise and other funds budget committee, and I'd like to call some words.
Matt Barber is absent, excused. Corey Brewster.
Here.
Steve Clemens.
Here.
Corinne Hudo.
Here.
David Glab.
Here.
Nicole Howard.
Here.
Jeanette Holz is absent, excused.
Molly King.
Next, Colton.
Here.
Mary Ann Meesner.
Here.
Roxy Okelvey.
Here.
Justin Rock.
Here.
Denise Wheeler.
Here.
Joya Wong is absent, excused.
Okay, I'd like to go ahead and approve the agendas, or any modifications that we could make.
We're good with it.
Can we have any conflicts of interest?
We already did counsel the mayor's, but I think we'll go ahead and just restate that he is declaring a potential conflict of interest for the general fund based on contracts that he has that are competitively awarded, but he is going to declare an actual conflict for the enterprise, or a potential conflict, but he's not going to participate for the enterprise and other funds. So the portion that we're going to ask a question about first, the general fund, he will participate.
Okay, and we need to then conduct another election for chair, is that correct?
You do.
I'd like to nominate Steve to do that again.
Second.
All approved, or all who would be in favor of that, say aye.
Aye.
All standing. All right. Different than the urban renewal district, we need a vice chair. So I'll ask for nominations for vice chair of the budget committee.
Nominate Roxy Okelvey.
I'll send in.
Any other nominations? I think if we're with consensus on that, we don't need to vote.
You don't.
So hopefully, I won't kick over tonight, and, but if I do, I know it's in good hands. All right, let's see, conduct discussion for meetings parameter. I suggested that we take a break about 7:30 this evening. Normally, we run 8:30 to 9:00, and usually, if we're close to a good, clean ending point around 8:30, we do. If not, we kind of go over until we reach that ending point. Does that sound reasonable to people? Okay, so 7:30 break, 8:30 end, 8:30 to 9:00 end this evening. Right. So the public hearings on the proposed budget and state revenue sharing for the city of La Grande are now open, and just as Robert noted earlier, we'll be taking public testimony for this proposed budget tomorrow evening.
Correct.
And with that, I'll ask for the budget message.
Thank you. Good evening again, different budget committee. This is the city budget committee, and you'll be considering the general fund as a separate action from the enterprise and other funds. But what I am going to do is start off with the budget message and overview of all of the funds, and would ask that you hold questions until we get through with the public comments tomorrow and start going through the individual ones. If we do have time to start going through those individual ones, where we actually have the department director, we can go ahead and answer some of those questions potentially And so in your packet, you did receive the budget message, and again, you know, our intent is, you know, La Grande is a great place to live, and communities that have a wide array of amenities, you know, full-service cities with parks, pools, library, public safety, all of those things, good water, streets that you can drive on, always a fun one. They tend to thrive, and those that don't have all of those things tend not to. And so what we strive to do, and what the council has consistently conveyed as their intent, was to continue to be a full-service city and to not reduce services if at all possible. As the budget committee, you do have the responsibility of reviewing the budget, hearing from the community, and then asking whatever questions that you have. And we did get, I don't know, about 40 or so questions in advance, which quite frankly saves a great deal of time, because you already have seen those questions and answers, and it really makes us go much smoother. And then anything that may come up from the public that you may think of as you're going through, we'll field those as well. And again, I was really pleased, I did meet with a lot of the new members of the committee and kind of walk through, and I hope that those were helpful meetings for everyone. Again, we are, with a couple of exceptions, maintaining our staffing levels. We are looking at adding three firefighter positions. The good news is, we did receive some grant funding that will assist with one of those positions in a graduated amount for about three years, and that information was provided to the budget committee by Chief Cornford via email. And we started off with an estimated cash of $7 million and a budgeted ending cash of about 3.6, inclusive of contingency and reserve for future expenditures. But we did end up with more cash than we had anticipated that it was going to be that was unrestricted. And several years ago, the council adopted a resolution that allocated what to do with those dollars, and then we changed it last year. And so of those dollars, and for this particular proposed budget, that $620,000 of- And so of those dollars and for this particular proposed budget, that $620,000 of increased cash that was not anticipated, that is not reserved for something that's not carried over money. Per council directive via that resolution, 25% of that is being transferred to the street reserve fund. 50% of that goes to the general reserve for future capital projects. And 25% of that goes to the general fund for essentially current capital needs. And you know, the lion's share of that is actually kind of earmarked for that wildland engine that you'll see in the fire department's budget. But the intent of the council with that resolution was to be taking that unanticipated increase in cash and putting 75% of it towards our current and future capital needs. And we need to have not less than 1.5 to 1.7 million dollars in the bank when the fiscal year starts to carry us forward until we get our property tax revenues in the fall. And so we're well above that right now. Okay, in your packet, one of the big changes is we've received the full $3 million in ARPA money. So the dollars from other governments went down. That was one of the questions that was in submitted by the budget committee. The other thing that I just wanted to highlight out of here is when we did the ARPA funding, the council's decision was to allocate all but $250,000 towards streets. And the other 250 was to be dedicated, I think at the time with the intent of matching grants for dollars that the fair board was pursuing. And we had a work session where we talked about this in a little bit more detail. And we discussed that we could provide to the fair board some reductions in water and sewer connection fees because the project is a water and sewer project. And that would go towards that $250,000 of financial commitment from the city. And we also have $119,000 of transient room tax revenues, dollars that we have received that have to be used for tourism promotion, tourism related facilities. We had been doing really good with our allocation of allocating that to, for parks for tourist related facilities, to the chamber for tourism promotion, Blue Mountain Conference Center when the chamber was operating that. And we went back and literally to the beginning of when the ORS changed how those dollars had to be allocated when we implemented and walked all the way through, we identified that we should have been allocated a slightly larger amount. And so we changed that percentage from I think 50.7 to 52 or 53%. That tiny change really didn't have any impact on what we were supposed to be spending versus what we had been. But we significantly underestimated TRT revenues a couple of years ago. And that's why we ended up with that $100,000 sitting there. And so my proposal is, and we've talked about this with the council, but it's a budget, it's before the budget committee as part of this budget, is to take that $119,000 and allocate it to that water and sewer project at the fairgrounds as a tourism related facility. Doing so would be a legitimate use of those dollars and it would also free up the ARPA dollars. And essentially we would be able to put the entire $3 million into streets as a result of that and provide the support to the fair.
Robert, I have, I'm going to ask you a question because I want to forget this one. What happens if the project doesn't occur in this fiscal year coming?
We would carry it forward until it does. We would not, we would not provide the funds until the project was going, so it could be dedicated to that. So again, for those that have been on the budget committee before, you've been looking at the same packet, same model. The kind of overall executive summary, again, we're, the three new firefighters. The other thing that we did add kind of as we were putting this together is a full-time IT position in the council manager personnel budget. And I'll talk to that when we get to that particular budget in a little bit more detail. Labor costs going up across all funds, about 7.37%. Materials and services costs actually dropped by a little over 4%. And capital outlay is up by 17%. And again, this is across all funds. And then within the general fund, anything that we're moving to the general reserve fund is listed in the council manager budget. Just for ease. And then it's also identified what we're buying with that in the department budgets. And we keep a separate tracking sheet that as we move money into the general reserve, we know which department that was earmarked for. So that when they do get to the point where they want to purchase something, we know how much money they have available. So again, I mentioned earlier, the, anything that you see in red is tied back to that $35,000. But this just kind of gives us a good snapshot of the difference in our revenues last year, which is actually the current year to the proposed year. And the biggest thing that we really see that jumps out is that, you know, 1.6 million in the other governments. That's that ARPA dollars that we received. And of course, we don't get a third installment unfortunately. And then requirements, again, this is, this, you know, this was kind of covered on that executive overview that I mentioned a minute ago, but you're kind of shows it in graphic form. And then drilling down to the general fund itself, you can see that increase in beginning resources, which then allows us to put 600,000 of that towards capital and streets.
Can I ask another question?
You may.
I gotta remember. Put my mic up here. Fees and charges up by 42%. What, did I, I looked through, I'm not sure I caught why that is. That's pretty.
Big chunk of that is tied to the ambulance billings.
All right, thank you.
And then the requirements. And again, this one did not change. You don't see any red numbers up there because we had allocated the 35,000 of general fund dollars as just an expenditure. The change for the general fund is on the revenue side. And I'll kind of walk through pretty quickly all of these charts through all of our funds. And if you would hold your questions, this is really intended more for the audience and not for the people that actually have already seen this information. And then we'll get to the end, we'll get the department directors up and they'll start answering any individual questions that you haven't answered. And I'll also, after I get through all these, touch on the questions and answers that we've already fielded from budget creating numbers. So again, the city's general fund. Again, you have the red numbers there because of the, that 35,000. But our hotel and motel taxes are up quite a bit. And so that's providing some assistance to us, the ambulance collection. And again, the ARPA funds, we've collected all of that, so we're not seeing any, any additional ARPA dollars coming in. We're still doing a $750,000 contingency and 750,000 reserve for future expenditure. I'll take this time to mention what that, the reserve for future expenditure isn't tied to a specific project or something that we think that we're going to spend the dollars on. This is a budgeting nuance in Oregon. The city council by resolution can access that $750,000 contingency. If we do run into expenditures where we're going to overrun the budget, the council can pass a resolution, move dollars from contingency to where we need it. If we were to have something happen that would exceed that, the city could do a supplemental budgeting process where we actually do another budget hearing, kind of the same process we're doing right now to access that additional 750,000. There was a, either, either we learned about it or there was a change in the budget law several years ago that said you really need to be using the reserve for future expenditure as opposed to trying to use a supplemental budget to get to the unappropriated ending fund balance. So we identified a dollar amount to place in there. We have accessed the contingency maybe two or three times over the past 10 or 15 years. We have not had to access the reserve for future expenditures. Council manager budget, again, the significant one here is the TRT allocations and where those are going. And the addition of that position in the IT, we're losing our IT support and we're currently trying to figure out how we're going to solve that, whether we're going to do it with an in-house hire, whether we're going to do that with a contracted services or a combination which, and we've got this budget structured with the flexibility to do whichever comes out. And hopefully we won't spend all of the dollars in both of those categories. Finance in court, really not a lot of change here. We are carrying over $15,000 for a switch upgrade that didn't get purchased in this year. And across all of the funds, you're seeing salary increases that are due to new contract negotiations and alignment from a marketing analysis and pay equity effort that we went through. We have not finalized the agreement between the city and the police department. Those negotiations are ongoing. And we also had to add in the additional percentage of the employer contribution for paid leave Oregon. So that's another small increase that's impacting the workers' comp in virtually all of the funds. Police department, again, we talked about, you know, the salaries. The computer systems maintenance agreements, a lot of these went up and down because it's kind of depended upon what the usage was last year. Those are likely going to change depending upon how things play out with the new model that we're using. This does include new funding for a facility study on the needs that the police department has, whether that's standalone facility or whether that's a facility that's co-located with the sheriff's office. This was something that came up after we were talking about the ARPA funding and came out of the retreat, so you do see that. We are seeing for fleet maintenance kind of across all of our, our stuff, it costs more to do stuff and fuel has gone up as well, which everybody is aware of. We're also having a challenge with getting vehicles purchased. The lead time for vehicles is pretty significant. So we're seeing a lot of approved purchases of vehicles that were, that we'd hoped we would get bought this year, but we aren't going to receive them or likely not to receive them. So we're carrying those dollars into the next year. The rule is if we put dollars in for a patrol vehicle in the current year's budget and we carry it forward to next year, but we're fortunate enough to get it and we spend it this year, Chief Bill does not get to buy an extra cop car next year. Not that he would ever ask that. Fire and EMS, again, the big change here is the increase in personnel and the purchase of the wildland engine. Parks department. The equipment and improvements is where you see that increase. We are carrying forward the $58,000 from the current year because we don't think we're going to get that vehicle purchased. And we are requesting to add a mid-sized truck and then a new deck mower and a snowplow attachment. Aquatics. Facilities repair is an increase. Plus, we also kind of moved a couple of things around here. So the equipment and repairs decreased by 10,000 because we moved part of that to facilities repair. And again, here's an example down in the, not included with this is 20,000 in general reserve for boiler replacement. That's shown in the council manager budget as the transfer to the general reserve. But I just wanted to highlight that as one of the example of that. Recreation, not a significant increase here, but they are asking for some dollars towards a new recreation van. And that was a question that came up in the budget questions and I'll just touch on those as we get further down. Urban forestry, again, not a significant change here. One thing to remember is that the street and roads pays a good chunk of this budget for the work that is done in the right way. Library, again, pretty much a status quo budget, not much of a change. We are seeing a little bit more cost because of the age of the facility. Economic development budget, the goal nine dollars are here for that work on looking at expanding our commercial footprint because we do need more commercial space for new and expanding business. And just referencing the $35,000 of general funds, that's for promotional recruitment activities outside the district. Planning department, this is perhaps our easiest budget. I don't know that we've ever had a question about the planning department. But we do have those dollars for the urban growth expansion piece in here. Building maintenance, there was a mistake in the narrative that you can see in red. I think that number showed 33,000 and something it should not have because we had actually moved the $25,000 into a capital line. And that's the end of the general fund. We're now going to just slide seamlessly into the enterprise and other funds. The first one is the building inspections division. And again, as a reminder, an enterprise fund is kind of like its own separate business. The dollars that come into the enterprise fund have to be used for those purposes. If they're not spent for those purposes, they stay there. We can't use water fund revenues to buy new police cars. We're not moving into dollars to the building inspection reserve fund. We actually, the department director had asked to move $35,000 there and then to expend it to buy a new vehicle. And I said, let's just keep it in the budget and just expend it out of that budget. There's no reason we can't do that. There is a capital line. So that's why you see a difference between the department requested and the manager proposed. 911 emergency fund, again, the 911 budget is for the portion of the 911 dispatch costs that are associated with actual 911 calls. The dispatch function for the non-911 is paid for by the city's general fund, which is augmented by other jurisdictions that use those services, which is shown as a revenue in the general fund. That was the beginning of the budget. Public Works Personnel Services, all of the dollars that are paid out in labor actually funneled through this budget in Public Works. And for some of the departments, you see a labor line that is identified that they actually pay, that they have it a little bit better figured out. In other places, it's like a 5,000, $500,000 line that then transfers into here. The Public Works Department does an excellent job of identifying hour by hour what the job is that's being worked to make sure that those are charged to the correct fund because we do have employees that may be working something storm utility related, one day, streets another. And so they do a great job of tracking that. All of the expenses come out of here, then dollars come into this from the various public works funds. In water fund, we spend a lot of money in the water fund. And they do some pretty big projects. And we do have a reserve where we've been putting dollars away. And one of the nice things about our current rate structure is, is we are doing a really good job of keeping our monthly fees at a lower sustainable level with moderate fees over time. But we're building up the balance because we know we have some pretty significant costs coming down the road. costs coming down the road, like we're going to have to build a new well sometime. Motor pool, this actually is almost like an enterprise fund within Public Works, but it's where they operate, purchase and rent out all the equipment that's used on the projects by the various departments. We're not looking at buying anything new in the coming year, but we are carrying forward money because of purchase lags that we're seeing. Street and road fund. As with others, we do see an increase in costs due to labor. And street reserve fund, we do projects out of here. And again, if you have questions about the specific projects, when Kyle gets up here, we can field those. Street maintenance, this is the user fee that you see on your water bill that's charged, and these go into projects. And then the storm utility fee, no real changes there. We actually had a work session where we talked about this fund as it pertains to snow removal recently. And then the reserve fund, where if we were going to have to do any significant upgrades to our system, it would come out of this fund. Sewer reserve fund. Grants and donations is kind of the fun one, because if we're getting money in, we need to do cool things, that's great, but one of the, kind of the nuances for this particular fund is we will budget a lot of revenues with the, you know, hoping to get the dollars, and then we budget to expend them, and if we do get the dollars, then we can expend them. So we typically budget a lot of revenue so that if we are successful in getting a grant, we have dollars appropriated that we can spend it without having to do a supplemental budgeting process. And the rule is if you don't get the dollars, you don't get to buy whatever you wanted to do it. This is the general reserve fund, primarily for the general fund, and you can see that the balance is continuing to grow because of the dollars that we have coming in. We don't have any specific projects identified, but we always budget a significant amount into the capital outlay for general capital improvements. This is in case we do have something like the police chief's car gets rear-ended and we have to go buy one, or if we had a significant cost involved in the general fund, we would have some capital dollars that we could bring to bear, so that's why we have 300,000 there. This is the fund that we paid for a portion of the roof in the library a couple of years ago. So that is the end of the overview, so I don't know if you want to take the break now, or do you want me to run through the questions real fast, then we'll break and then bring people up? You pick.
The second. Let's, let's not take a break yet.
So I'll do the questions?
Yeah.
Okay. So a couple of years ago, somebody came and said, you know, you guys don't really ask a lot of questions, you just kind of go through the budget real quick and then you approve it, not recognizing that there were dozens of questions asked by budget committee members in advance to save time. And we, we put those up on the website, and I'm going to touch on them here real, real briefly. The budget committee has seen this, so this is mostly for those that are watching at home or in the audience. Already talked about the IT services, and there was an error where we had said hours used when it was actually minutes used. Mary Ann said, hey, you know, if you've got your 33,000 hours, isn't that like 16 full-time employees? It was minutes. But those, those minutes are what's used to help allocate where the work was done. And again, we, we're hoping that we'll be able to come up with, what I'm, what I'm kind of hoping for is a combination of some in-staff labor with some contract for some of the more technical stuff to fill the void that's going to be left when IMESD stops doing it. Workers and, workers comp did increase for all the departments, and paid leave Oregon is mandatory, and that's why you see that. Question was asked about whether or not the new firefighters are paid out of the general fund, and is there any grant funding that's, that's helping? All of the firefighters paid comes out of the general fund. We do receive at times, if we go out and we respond to an incident in another part of the state, Conflag will get dollars for the time that, and the equipment used that comes in as a revenue into the general fund that helps offset those labor costs and equipment costs. But we did get a $332,000 grant, which is 90%, then 75, and then 50% over three years of the salary and training costs to help offset towards the new positions. There's another question about fire and EMS on the overtime, there's $300,000 scheduled for overtime. A lot of that is resulting from FSLA overtime because of the 56-hour shift. And there's a lot of numbers in your, in your memo and also in your packet. Of that 300,000, 114,000 of that is the FSLA overtime because they are working shifts. One of the nuances to that is if we were, if we were, if we were paying someone regular hours instead of overtime hours for that, it would be reduced cost, but the difference, because that work still has to be done, is $38,000. So it's, it's not quite as bad as it looks. And then a portion of the overtime is tied back to the decision that was made a few years ago. When we get that second call out from the station, because we have five-person crews, sometimes with only four on, the captain on shift makes a decision as to whether or not, depending upon what the types of calls are and where people are located, whether or not to bring someone back in on overtime in case we get that third call. And if memory serves, when they did that about six or eight years ago, we thought it was about a $30,000 a year increased overtime that was, that was a decision by the budget committee affirmed by the council that we wanted to allocate those dollars for that added level of protection as opposed to having to wait for someone to come back in the event we did get a third call. So that factors into it. If in our EMT, our casuals are EMTs, we can use those for very limited things, we can't use them for firefighters. So there's a lot of stuff that goes to that, and Emmett can expand on this if need be, but we provided answers to that. If we wanted to change away from this 56-hour shift, we would be hiring a lot more firefighters to work shifts to be able to do that. Question about the long-term implications of adding three new firefighters. It's about $139,000 a year will roll up for a firefighter. And so it's a, it's a pretty significant price tag. When we look at the totality of our public safety situation, we've been able to restore back police positions that we cut 15 years ago. We have not increased our staff in, in fire in forever. And the call volume that we're seeing, the impact on the, the safety of our community, the impact on our ability to track and retain employees, the need is there. And I feel strongly that, that we need to fund these positions, and if down the road that means that we're essentially dedicating all of the under levy dollars towards offsetting this, or whether that means that we have to revisit other things that we're doing on the revenue expense side to fund it, I think we do have that time, but I feel strongly that this is something that we do need to do. I'll get off my soapbox. So, there was a question about the professional services and fees doubling since 2001, and what kind of a benefit are we getting from leveraging the GEMT program? Are we spending this money on the wildlife engine, or wildland engine, wildlife? Wildland engine, and so are other jurisdictions going to pay any portion? Where's the, you know? This is 200,000, but there's only four zeros, so I guess the comma's in the wrong line, being, so it's 20,000 being spent on this line. Approximately 40,000 line is to pay for annual requirements and contracts such as laundry services, annual testing of fire equipment, maintenance, testing various EMS equipment, policy, service, annual elevator inspections, 15,000 will be for fire chief recruitment, 72,000 is to pay the ambulance billing service. And again, we're looking to recover about 1.7 million dollars in fees, and then 70,000 is budgeted for leveraging the GMAT program. So when you add all that stuff, it's a pretty significant line, but it's something, a lot of it's stuff that we don't have a choice but to pay for. Police budget, fire, or sorry, the fuel and lubricant cost increased 50%, seems like 53%. What's the reason? Fleet maintenance only went up, or also went up 28%. And these are tied directly to inflationary expenses that we've been experiencing. Fuel and lubricant line is where we pay for the gas for patrol vehicles, not really drawing, driving a lot more miles, but the cost of fuel has gone up substantially, so that's what we're seeing there. What is the other rentals in the police budget? That's the lease of the police station facility. We don't own that building, the sheriff's office or the county does, and so we pay rent on it. Question of whether or not it's time to seriously look at electric vehicle fleet. Response there is that we're really not ready to make that move yet, keep looking at that as an option, but given our purpose and the way that the equipment is coming, we just don't think this is the time to do that. Question for the police budget on the $17,000 for the computer system, and it's, represents software and hardware, 17,000, which is actually down from the current year of 17.5. It's used to purchase new computers, monitors, hardware, all, all of the components. What's the advertising line in the police department used for, and is that for recruiting? 5,000 of that, which is down from 5,800 from last year, projecting spend about 2,000 in the current year. It's used for advertising vacant positions, paying required advertisements for things like vehicle and property disposal, annual noxious weed vegetation notice, we pay for that out of that advertising line. There is a recruiting line that does pay for other costs but not advertising, so as we need to do things, the recruiting budget line pays for things like medical, but it doesn't pay for the advertising. On police budget, also the significant increase in moving and towing from 2,200 to 14,000, and this has to do with the cost of disposing of abandoned and junk RVs. We have spent a lot of money to do that. And there was some legislation that was working through on that, I don't know if it's going to end up helping or not, and I don't know whether that survived, but it's between 1 and $5,000 just to get rid of one junk RV. Building inspection, the cash balance keeps going up, and should we look at reducing And Joe put together a pretty good response that talks about, a lot of the increase that we've seen over the last couple of budget years is a very large project, and it's added about 330,000 over two years, and that's a big chunk of that additional money. Also, our fees are collected at the beginning of the project, but the expenses aren't necessarily seen until over the years you're actually doing the inspections, so there's a timing piece. We could look at temporarily reducing fees, you know, there's some talk about that perhaps related to the housing production strategy. I think the one caution that I would toss out there is if we adjust our building fees, the county also has to agree to that fee change, and historically, the county has been very hesitant to increase fees for building. You know, I think that when you look kind of statewide, we have pretty competitive fees, they are covering our costs, so I would caution against reducing the fees. Maybe doing something related to the housing production strategy could make sense. But again, it's an enterprise fund, the dollars go in there and they stay there. Building maintenance, there was a question about what was the, where were the dollars going? And it didn't add up to the 38, 850, and I think that the 38, 850 in the narrative didn't have the 25,000, or had the 25,000, it shouldn't have been, but anyway, there is 33, 850, and it's going to a variety of things, grounds maintenance, emergency repairs, window glazing and painting, but the biggest piece of that is to replace all of the lighting in city hall, all that fluorescence to an LED, and that'll save us some dollars on energy costs, but we're, one of the challenges is when the ballast goes out, you have to hire an electrician to come in to change your, to fix your light. Got to love commercial businesses. So, council manager budget under the resources piece, miscellaneous and interests are down 41%, and the governmental one is down quite a bit, yes, that was because of the ARPA dollars. And the interest line is we use our local government investment pool, and we budget 25, and are going to get 190,000. And then with the swing of interest rates, you never know what's going to happen. We've seen them go from .9 in May of 2022 to 3.7 in February of 2023. 84 more to go. What's the professional service line in the council management, managers budget? Big chunk of this is the Union Elgin participated in the ground med program, and so when we sell a membership for ground med, they get a portion of that, so that's one of the, the dollars that is going there. Why are we, again, council manager budget, why are we spending $18,000 on system maintenance? And this is the EST contract portion, and as the usage fluctuates, those dollars are going to change with our new system, I'm not sure how it's going to, how it's going to go. Why are we spending $5,500 on a computer system? What's it for? This is the line that we use to replace hardware and software, we don't have anything specific that we're using that 5,000 for, but it's a typically a pretty good number. This year, we actually did the tablets out of that line for the council, which clearly is very productive, because I see you guys using a lot, a lot better than the laptops that you were using before. Question about the, the dollars being spent for animal control and the shelter. So there's $30,000 that goes to Union County for animal control, and then there's 14,500 for the shelter. We don't get data on these, we used to get information from the shelter when we were in a, we had a separate agreement with the shelter for the dollars that we provided a few years ago. We opted to funnel those dollars through the county instead as part of the contract with the county for the services that the shelter were doing. The city council wanted to add another, I think it was 4,500, or maybe it was $5,000 a couple of years ago, directly to the shelter. Those dollars actually get passed through the county to the shelter, but they do go there and they do not reduce the amount. In regards to the animal control piece, the, the counties is the jurisdiction, has the authority, has the jurisdiction for animal control in Union County. The city does not do animal control, we do not enforce their ordinances, but we do provide the $30,000 of support to them for doing that kind of countywide service, just as they provide $40,000 to the library for providing countywide service out of the library. Those don't necessarily equate, but the, conceptually, the question has, you know, should we be spending it differently? spending it differently to, to do things with dog at large and feral cats? I, I would caution about trying to put any strings on those support dollars that we're providing. If the council or the budget committee were interested in doing something towards dealing with the feral cat situation. I think we want to be really cautious about what we were doing, how much and how that would be utilized. So. Why do we have council manager? Why do we have 14 million dollars of unappropriated money? That's across all funds. That's not just in the general fund. The appropriated ending fund balances, the money left in the bank after we have brought in all of our revenues, appropriated all of our funds, set aside money for contingency and set aside reserve for future use. That's just the dollars that are left. And it just happens to be the number. There's nothing magical about that particular number. And then I already answered the question about the $750,000 reserve for future use in the city's general fund. We were asked the question of the percentage of hotels and motels versus short-term rentals. There are 48 properties paying TRT revenues. 34 of those are short-term rentals or 71%. However, I'm thinking the question was probably was the portion of TRT revenues or hotels and motels bring in 93% of the revenues received. And again, a short-term rental, it could actually be a hotel. It's a stay that's 30 days or less. What's covered for the auditing cost that pays our independent auditor to do the audit and cost of filing with the state? There's questions about computer fees. That's already been answered in finance. Professional services and fees. Why is it up 30%? Majority of this is the credit card merchant fees. We had a total of in fiscal year 2021, 30,960 payments that were paid either credit card or online billing system. And we're on track to have more than 37,000 payments. So fees go with those. And from a customer service standpoint, I think that's money well spent. Parks, what's in the queue for the 44,000 of repairs? The 50,000 in repairs budget is normal for the parks throughout the year, irrigation, equipment, upkeep, painting, vandalism, repair, those sorts of things. Is the 20,000 for the boiler and the pool budget in general reserves? And is this on a specific line and it was? For aquatics, what's covered in the departmental supply line? And it includes concessions, staff uniforms, pool exercise equipment and more. Really hasn't changed for most years, but they did move some things within that budget to get it out of professional service and facilities repairs. Getting close to the end. What will the van be used for in the recreation department? Just to replace the 1982 bus that's used along with their 2013 van to transport kids during summer day camps to local hikes, fishing at Morgan Lake and a variety of other things. Okay. Fire and EMS. I think we've already answered that one. How many a year do the police vehicles go before they retire him? Five years, 100,000 miles is kind of the life expectancy. Will the parks wreck aquatics? What will be added for the Greenway Trail Loop? That's another 1,600 feet of asphalt trail with some landscaping. Status of the work to repair the playground at Riverside Park. They've got a committee that's working on that. And they've got a number of designs. And once they do that, they will continue with the fundraising campaign with hopes of raising more than 40% of the project costs so that the staff can obtain a grant for the remaining 60%. This question about what's been added for adult leagues? They've added adult co-ed soccer. Players in demand for more that missed the registration. There's other interest for cornhole. That's right. A cornhole league could be coming soon. Question about shortage of lifeguards and has the shortage abated nationwide? Pools are experiencing a shortage of lifeguards and with a two-year gap of ability to train and certify people. It was really challenging, but things are starting to look up. And we're getting close to being fully staffed. Any plans for classes to get young people to grant to train for this work? And in spring, we've offered three weekend lifeguard classes, lifeguard class for through EOU for college credit and continue to hold one lifeguard class per month. That should help. Last page. Why have the fines and court fees taken a dip in revenue over the past few years? Couple of factors. One is in 2020, the Oregon legislature passed House Bill 4210, which repealed the ability to impose driving privilege suspensions and restrictions if people were convicted of a traffic offense and failed to pay a fine. By losing the ability to have a stick, in short, we're losing revenues coming in from fines not being paid. I already talked about the follow-up that 33,000 minutes is different than hours. Know the opioid settlement money. We don't have all of it yet. It's actually going to continue over several years on a reduced amount. And there's other settlements coming. So we still have a fair portion of additional opioid dollars coming. What's the new battery operated rescue tool for fire and EMS? Battery operated rescue tools have been requested, an assortment of tools that allow our crews to educate patients from trampment in motor vehicles, crashes or industrial accidents. They include spreaders, cutters and rams. They're self-contained, powered by rechargeable battery. Current rescue tools are powered by a generator on the rescue vehicle and run hoses to each tool. Some of the benefits of the batteries is elimination of trip hazards, quicker setup, no hydraulic fluid or fuel. And are we replacing the wildland engine or adding a new one? The new wildland engine would be in addition to our current engine. The plan is to move our current engine into reserve status, allowing for it to be brought into service. So we have large incident such as a state conflag request or mechanical issues. Those were all the questions and answers that the budget committee submitted over the past couple of weeks. And I think we probably saved about a day's worth of evening meeting by covering that as I appreciate your letting me walk through that in 27 minutes.
Perfect timing. So it's about 7:30. Let's let's have like a five to seven break. Try to get back here by 7:35. Start playing music now. Okay. Call us back to order. Thank you very much. Boy, you got really quiet fast. I like that. So now we're going to go through each of the individual budgets.
Yep.
Or funds. If people have specific questions to ask the director of that program. Please do so at that time. I see Joe's up.
So, so Joe is a member of a budget committee that meets tomorrow. And so I wasn't sure if anybody was going to have any questions about the building inspection fund.
Okay.
So if you will humor me. If there are any questions pertaining to building inspections, you can go ahead and ask, and then we can restate whatever the question answer was when we get to the building inspection actual hearing piece. I'll cover the, I'll cover the mechanics of it. Any questions for Joe regarding building inspections?
Yeah, because he didn't look like Heather. He does not.
Sorry.
That's good.
Heather would have, that, that, that comment is because we would be doing. Any questions for Joe? Building inspection, building. There's a reserve fund there. I want to thank you for your questions because I look, I think I asked the one about the ending fund, any cash. And it makes sense. I forgot. I mean, you've got hospital construction and that's got to be generating or generated a lot of fees. And yet you're still doing your inspections and you will be doing the inspections until that project is done. Couple of years, probably.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. So thank you for that. Anyway, questions for Joe? Building inspection, building inspection, reserve funds.
And the apartment building is the other one. That's the big.
That is another larger project. Yeah, we've, we've had several of them. It seemed like starting a few years ago from the field house and a few large projects that we're not going to see all the time. I mean, it'd be great if we did, but.
That's why the rest of us have to wait nine months to get a roof repaired.
No questions for, for Joe?
All right, go after that.
Hey, thank you.
All right. Moving back to the general fund.
Right. General fund revenue and contingency unappropriated balance. Heather, do you know that your name is spelled incorrectly? Heather, do you know that your name is spelled incorrectly on your sign? I was trying to pronounce that, but I wasn't getting anywhere.
People can't pronounce it anyways.
It's an A after the R. Rajovic.
Raikovich. Looks like Rajkovich, but it's Raikovich.
Okay, questions for Heather on general fund reserve revenue for contingency unappropriated balance? All right. Yes, no? Council city manager, Robert?
This is for him.
Let me see, I had some. When you were talking about the feral cat issue and I realized that's a. The county is supposed to do animal control. Emphasis on supposed to. I do know that the animal shelter itself was pretty successful at controlling cats in a particular area. When that happened, the neighbors got together and raised eight or $900. Might have been more. And then the shelter came in and did the trapping. I wonder if it's something that the city wants to do, and I throw this out to the council. Consider contracting with the shelter to do some of that removal issue. And they know better what it costs to treat the number of cats that are there. And what they do is catch, neuter, spay, release. So they just stop, they end the reproductive problem.
I quite frankly think it's a little bit larger issue that we can tackle. With coming up with an arbitrary number, and I don't mean that in a mean spirited way and throwing the budget. Let's throw some dollars into the budget. You know, this came up at the last city council meeting. Commissioner Scarfo talked about it a little bit. There's been a couple of news articles that relate to it. I think that what would be most appropriate would be to continue a dialogue with the county. Have a dialogue with the shelter. But really take a look at, you know, what might make sense as a concerted effort. As a community overall and figure out what a price tag would be. And then is that where we would want to allocate resources? So my suggestion would not be to add any dollars towards that. And certainly not to attempt to dictate or direct to the county how they administer the ordinance for animal control. Because that is their purview.
I have a meeting scheduled, well, pending with Commissioner Scarfo coming up and to discuss that. So that's what we hope to do is look at the problem, find a dollar amount, find solutions, but we're not there yet.
Yeah, and I wasn't suggesting adding money to the budget.
Oh, no.
I thought that there was a possibility that the shelter has done this. They know what it costs. They have the equipment. They just don't have the resources in and of themselves. And one thing that you might talk to Commissioner Scarfo about is. Is there a way to contract with the shelter to do that work? And they already know where the problems are. They just don't have the resources to work on it. Anyway, any other questions on council manager personnel?
I have one.
Sure.
I think in the right section. Nuisance abatement.
Yeah.
It jumps considerably $50,000. I know part of the issues that have been brought up is placing a lien on property where.
Can you put your microphone?
So sorry. Nuisance abatement, $50,000.
Yeah, I can cover that. Several years ago, there was a property in town that burned down. Ultimately, we had to abate it. I think it cost us about $30,000 to do that. When we were putting this budget together. We were looking at an ongoing issue with another property. That we've actually had to abate a couple of times and were several thousand dollars in to clean up there. And there is the potential for us to find ourselves in a situation where. We actually do have to go in and do a significant abatement. Which could include significant legal fees, but a lot of cleanup. And then we would attempt to recoup those dollars through liens. And in the case of the one that we spent about $30,000 on. I think we got a very tiny check at the end when the county ended up settling that for property tax. Because we're behind the county in property tax. But in the event that we do abate something, it is always our intent to, where possible, attach a lien to that. In hopes of recouping dollars.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions, council, city manager, personnel budget? All right, finance and municipal court. Chief Bell, you're up, I think. List budget. Facilities planning. What have you got in mind? I see roughly $48,000 allocated for, for a consultant?
It is.
Okay.
If you'd like me to elaborate, so the intent, as discussed in council retreat this year. Is to move forward with a comprehensive needs analysis, which we would contract for. In addition to that. So, you know, to get it into a little bit more broken down terms, basically what we're looking for is. What are our needs in terms of square footage, office spaces and things like that? We've identified that the space is no longer adequate. In addition to that needs analysis, we're also looking for an estimated cost. What would it cost us to build or develop a police department with 911 center? And then the third thing we would be asking for is some ideas of funding options. City manager and I met with county officials within the last few weeks. So what we're doing is not in a vacuum outside of what the county is doing. So we're collaborating. And what we're doing is keeping our options open in terms of. Would this in the future be a standalone police department? Or would it be a combined public safety facility with the city and the county, much like what we have now?
And I thought I read someplace where the county is doing, has allocated some money to do something similar. Are you using the same consultant or you trying to work?
Yeah, that's, we would obviously have to put that out for a bid. But that is desirable for a few reasons. One of which is there's some data that we could potentially share costs on. But like I failed to mention is the information that we're looking for is not necessarily separate from what the county is looking for. The information, their needs and our needs both need to be assessed.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Which entity owns the facility and the land that the police station and sheriff's officer on now?
Yeah, the county owns that entire, kind of call it a campus. It's like two blocks that the county owns. So they own the current jail and where the sheriff's office and the police department are located.
So that's the rent that we pay?
That's correct, yeah. So we, the cost is shared between the police budget and the 911 budget. And it's, we renegotiated that lease a few years ago. And right off the top of my head, Corinne, I think it's about $61,000. That's not an exact number, but it's right in that neighborhood.
So when our department moved into that facility. Other, like, was it Elgin and Union had their own police departments?
Yeah, that is correct. So the city police department was on Elm Street, right next to the, you know, the old fire station. Or in the same building before we moved. And let me set the record straight. I was not working for the police department when we made that move. This was like 1970, 1980. I've been there for a while, but not that long. But that is correct. At that point in time. Both Union and Elgin had their own police departments. So the sheriff's office, the jail was very similar in terms of staffing and what it looked like then and now. But the sheriff's office patrol function is very different. Because as you know, they have contracts to provide law enforcement services to both of those cities.
So there's more officers in that same space?
That's correct. More people in the same amount of square footage. And over the years and in the time that I've been there, we have done everything that we know that we can. To eke out every little square footage that we can and workspace in the facility.
And it's not set up ideally either, so.
No, it's not efficient. One of the examples is like our property room is downstairs. So there's some disconjoined things. There's a lack of ADA accessibility to the entire basement where our conference room and. Training facilities and things like that are, so it's just, it's just no, it's not ideal for lots of reasons.
Yeah, Gary, the capital outlay, I noticed that you had the $59,000 for this year for the car. And you're estimating $69,000 for the new car.
Right, yes.
So did you increase, because you're carrying over the 59. Did you increase that by another $10,000 to cover, because it's probably on the cost of 69 for both of them, right? Or for each of them now?
Part of that is correct, Mary Ann. The $59,000, that figure was budgeted last year. In the budget that we're still operating in through the end of June. The problem is, a few years ago, post pandemic, like many of you are probably aware. Is the supply chain was interrupted horribly. And at least with what we're doing, that hasn't fully recovered. So we historically, like if we're going to buy a new police car, we order that. You know, through a manufacturer shortly after the beginning of the fiscal year in July, usually by the end of July. And we would normally have that in our possession and even outfitted. Which means once we get the car, then we have a separate vendor. Put all of the lights and radios and all of that stuff in the car. But we would have that by the end of the calendar year. We ordered the car from the budget we're in, in July, and we still have not received it. So we're carrying that over because we don't even know if we'll have that possession of that by the end of this fiscal year. We were notified that it's been shipped, so we'll see. But then to have it outfitted. Now, the cost increase for the police car that we're requesting for capital this year. It's about a 10% increase. And it's, what we're experiencing for operational expenses is very similar to what all of us individually are experiencing at the grocery store and everywhere else. It's just, costs are just inflated. And one of the things, for instance, like with our outfitters, and we put that up to bid every year. But they're having a challenging time with labor, just like everyone else. And so their demand is super high, and so they're raising prices in order to meet that.
But will we get that one that you ordered this year for the 59 or will we have to pay 69 for it?
No, no, that, those, we put that out to bid. And once then, both the vehicle manufacturer and the vendor that does the upfitting. They provide us a quoted price and that's locked in. So, yep, no additional cost. That $59,000 will pay for that.
I thought you were going to say more for it this.
No.
Okay, good.
Are your calls for service up?
That's a great question, Corinne, slightly. And I brought everything else with me, but I don't have the exact number. They're up, but the, and what I talk to so many people about is the complexity and the dwell time of the calls for service. The dwell time, I mean, is how long does it take a police officer to come to a resolution at that call for service? Up significantly, and it's tied directly to mental health. So the complexity, meaning we, you know, 10 years ago, we would go to calls for service. And maybe in a short period of time, be able to apply some solution. And contrary to what the movies and a lot of times people think is. Most of those solutions that police officers apply don't result in someone going to jail. But we resource and, you know, get people connected to, you know, other resources within the community trying to solve the problem. The issue that we are struggling with and law enforcement around the nation, quite frankly, is. Mental health and the lack of resources. And so our police officers, when there's nothing else, our police officers will end up spending. It's not unrealistic for officers to take a call for service and be with someone for well over an hour on one call for service. Or deal with that same individual three or four times during the course of a shift. And so when you just look at the raw data of calls for service, it doesn't represent the entire story.
Is it, has it leveled off since like 2020, 2021 that you shot up?
Yeah, absolutely not.
It's, so it's.
No, no.
Not gone to pre-pandemic?
Yeah, absolutely not. With the decriminalization of drugs and the mental health issue. It's like gasoline on the fire.
Any other questions for Chief Bell?
I won't have to ask you. My favorite went to you because they already know.
You know the answer.
Denise, did you have your hands up?
Yeah.
Hold on.
Oh, I'm sorry. I just have, your computer system and maintenance and repair has gone up really significantly. And I was just wondering why?
Yeah, let me look and make sure because there's several lines that I always have to remind myself.
That's the IMESD one that I talked about.
Before, okay, I didn't know if that was.
Yeah, that's the one that we're talking about.
Oh, okay, okay.
All right. Fire an EMS. Yep, go ahead.
I was just wondering, with the addition of the three firefighters. Will the number on a shift go up or will it just mean less overtime, right? Right now, we staff, is it five personnel per shift?
Yeah, we staff five with a minimum of four. So if anybody off on sick leave, vacation, gone to training, we'll go down to four. So the additional three would add one to each shift, so we would be six with a minimum of five. So that cuts down on overtime significantly just from call volume. Like Robert talked about, a lot of our overtime callbacks is for that third out request. So that third out call, especially on a six-person crews, would be able to be covered. And we wouldn't need to call that callback until after a third call, which does happen, but not near as often.
And then how optimistic or concerned are you about the prospect of locating three individuals that have the right training? Or can get the right training?
Well, we've had to adjust a few things to try to make that happen. Actually, today and tomorrow, we're testing 14 candidates for the two openings that we currently have. None of them are actually paramedics. That's the struggle we're having is to find paramedics. So we have three that are students in the paramedic program already. The rest of them, we decided a long time ago to try to start building our own. So the problem with that is it takes a significant amount of time. We don't try to start them in school until they're done with their probationary year. Not overload them, make sure they can concentrate on those orientation things. So in all, it's about three years to get them through and get them certified as a paramedic. We have three that are starting this month that we hired a year ago. So in about 18 months, they'll be ready.
Paramedic is a higher certification than EMT. Is that correct? So are they EMTs but not paramedics?
Yeah, they're required to be EMTs before we hire them.
How many times, I'm assuming when Lifelight goes, you send one paramedic with them. Is that correct?
Yes, in this last year, we signed a contract with them. So they essentially lease our ambulance with the driver, so we don't have to send a full crew. So we send one person typically. Sometimes we'll have to send two depending on the condition of the patient or the size of the patient.
Oh, okay. To meet the helicopter and then the helicopter crew takes them away? Our people don't fly too.
This is mostly transfers out of the hospital, so we'll send an ambulance and a crew member up there. And they meet the Lifelight crew, so Lifelight does all of the patient care in the transport from the hospital to the.
Because the hospital doesn't have a helicopter pet or.
It's probably another six to eight months before the hell stops. And that's being real optimistic.
Have to send a paramedic with Lifelight, with the helicopter. So their crew is, are they, paramedics do then? So the, so their crew is, are they paramedics too then?
They're staffed with a paramedic and a nurse typically.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Chief, with the addition of three firefighters, one of the things I don't know, I mean, okay, we're a town of 13,000, uh, we're gonna now have 18 full-time fire, fire crew. We have, uh, the addition of three. What's normal for a town our size and where do we fit within that range?
Well, it's difficult because depends on the services that the department offers. So because we're a transporting service, that increases our call volume. So if you look at call volume, um, if you look at Pendleton, I think Pendleton staffs with eight or nine a day, uh, they run a call volume of about 5,000 calls a year. They, in addition to that, have two, sometimes three student firefighters that are on duty. So they have significant staff. Uh, we ran last year 3,500 and some calls, 3,560, I think. Uh, we staff with probably 60% of the time, four people and the other 40% of the time, five.
So we're quite a bit lower than Pendleton.
And it's been even worse the last few years, just with people leaving and, and short staffing, a lot of callback.
And that's county-wide, so we serve the whole county?
Yeah, the ambulance serves the whole county, the fire department serves the city of La Grande and has automatic aid with the La Grande rural district. So we also get the reciprocal of that from them.
Any other questions for Chief Bell? Thank you, Chief. This is a mouthful, but then he can stand up to it. Parks, aquatics, recreation, urban forestry. Stu?
Boston paramedic.
I, you know, I have to say that I spend an, an, an enormous amount of time with this guy, probably more now than I did before. And it's always a pleasure and, and always fun, so.
Don't you have a rule of three minutes of time for speaker?
Or do you want me to step? I'll set a timer.
Yeah, we, we wanna limit, well, as much as I like the guys who wanna, oh, or for me.
I think he's talking about you.
Oh, okay.
He was.
I, I've never been one to be quiet, but, okay. Any questions for Mr. Spence?
Tell us about the greenway.
What do you wanna know?
Well, so 1,600 feet, which is a quarter mile.
About, yeah, so.
And when's that gonna happen?
The summer. Uh, so we have grant funding for most of that project. There's some general fund match in the reserve account for that project, um, working with contractors, public works, et cetera, right now. So that will create a loop instead of a dead end, as most of you are aware. And, um, yeah, there's some trail at the end, uh, where that dead end is that's deteriorated, maybe because they didn't apply enough base rock or compaction at the time. Maybe they just kinda ran the asphalt out till they ran out of asphalt, but they didn't prep it. So that's failing, so we're gonna take that out, install new, and then create a loop and plant like 500 trees and bushes back there.
So you'll be calling us then, huh?
It's gonna be great.
I do have a question on the aquatics department, uh, salaries, part-time. Pretty, so you budgeted last year 128, you act, you estimate you're gonna do about 89, and now you're up to 133, and that's gone up pretty, pretty much almost doubled in a couple of years. What's, what's going on there?
Well, if you look at those couple of years on the page, those don't count because those are pandemic years. The pool was closed for a lot of those, right? So that's, that's what you're looking at there, so those aren't apples to apples. Um, the budget this year, or this year estimated is because we don't have any staff because of that two-year lag that we talked about in the narrative. Um, there's just not, uh, Michaela and Bree, the two full-time staff are on deck, I don't know, 100-plus hours, uh, easily during swim season, which goes November to February. So it was just, uh, a lot of those, those salaries are up above in the salary line, so they don't show up in the part-time line because they have to be on deck instead doing their own jobs. Right? Does that answer your question?
It, it does, and oftentimes I'll ask these questions so that people understand that it's more complicated with the number increasing, so thank you.
And minimum wage also went up. Minimum wage also went up.
Thank you.
70 cents.
Yep.
So how many pool users you have a year?
Michaela?
I do, Michaela. I'd just like to get a perspective of, okay, this is the dollars that you have in parks and the pool and recreation, and how many people utilize that, how many, yes, to see what, what we're?
And we're talking about, you know, memberships and just people that go on a Friday. We're talking about club kids and swim team kids, so lots of different people.
Yeah, the water aerobics ladies.
Do I understand correctly that you've requested or been granted a fee increase?
Mm-hmm.
Is that correct?
It'll go into effect next month in June when we go to summer hours.
Okay.
Yeah.
You anticipate that having any?
No, it's, the demand is so high for every single thing we do. I think we could charge a lot more for a lot of things.
Okay.
It's insane demand. Do you have a guess?
I don't have like super up-to-date numbers, but as of March, we have served 15,000 people.
From January to March?
No, sorry, from, uh, July to March.
Okay, so not even a year.
Right.
Okay. So 15,000 people in, um, nine, eight or nine months?
Correct, and that doesn't include one of our high-use months, which is, um, I mean, April and May start to get more busy so that those numbers aren't quite, um, proportional, but June is really heavy, so you'll see a big increase in attendance there as well.
Swim lessons.
Mm-hmm, swim lessons. So our private lessons are filling up within 10 minutes of them posting.
I have heard complaints about that.
As fast as I can get swim instructors, um, trained, we will open more lessons. But basically, um, since we have started to reopen lessons, those have been completely full every month.
And kids around here, because we have rivers and lakes, they need to learn how to swim.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Life skill. All right, what about recreation and how many people use that?
Ooh, that's a harder number to find. I can pull it for you and email it to you. That one would take me probably an hour to get.
Because the kind of pro, pro programs that you do at Cornhole, who knew we're finally, you know?
Yeah, I can kinda give you general numbers. Typically for a youth sports league, we have anywhere between 100 and 300 kids per league.
Let me, let me, let me just interject. Rather than doing that, get the numbers, that'll be a, that'll be a report back to you.
Absolutely.
That'd be good, yeah, I just kinda wanna get an idea of what we're, what?
Happy to do it.
More questions, uh, parks, aquatics?
So the, uh, the tennis courts by the high school are, belong to the school district, not parks. Does parks have any courts?
No.
So there's no chance of pickleball, huh?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that word. What? Swearing at me.
Isn't there pickleball on Riveria?
Yeah, um, there's private groups doing pickleball around the community. The city is not, uh, the Parks Master Plan that was adopted last year, pickleball ranked last for priority in our community of about, what were there, 500 respondents? Maybe, I mean, there's lots of phone calls, I get lots of interest, but.
I did that survey at least five times and said pickleball.
Yeah, you did. You were the five.
Maybe you need to do it again, cause I have a feeling the number will go up.
Maybe in five years, like it's slated to. Um, so my answer to pickleball groups seriously is if, just like the pump track folks, right? If you wanna build a pump track and you want to, you know, come to the co, come to the Parks Commission, pitch the idea, and then the Parks Commission will say, cool, we help, we'll help you, go get organized and help raise the money, and we will help. And the Pump Track Committee, the Blue Mountain Single Truck Trails Club, has done that. They've raised tens of thousands of dollars on their own, in their own accord, and they've worked with the city on different grants and different opportunities. The city's a partner, so that's really the answer. And I've told that to the pickleballers, that, you know, get organized, get a plan, and let's talk about it, you know? There's some opportunity there.
Because realistically, with a $573,000 budget, there's not a lot of room to make new. That just functions to upkeep what we have.
Are you in parks or in you?
I'm parks.
Right, right. You gotta remember, our budget's a little weird too because we generate a lot of revenue with different user fees and programs as well. Bazillion rentals, you know, swim lesson fees, all the things. So the impact you're looking at isn't the full impact of the general fund, cause we make some of that back in revenue.
Any other questions?
That's the money to spend, Corinne, thank you.
Any other questions for Stu?
I was gonna say, did you fix the, the parking lot at, at Pioneer Park? I mean, not Pioneer.
Yeah, the answer is yes, at Riverside. I did not, but Public Works did, so thank you, Kyle.
Thank you, Kyle. There were some big dips in there, really.
Some people have old fancy cars.
Yeah, yeah. I think we lost a couple cars in there last year. Hit it and they didn't come back.
Nothing else for, for Stu? Thank you. Library director, please. Questions about the library? Roof is on, yes, new roof, did that one on?
Sure.
Yeah. Been a while, so I think.
I have a question. I, I just noticed a, a huge increase too. What are the office supplies versus department supplies?
So the department supplies, um, that's all of our programming costs.
Okay.
So all of the programs that we, um, provide for the community, Storytimes, um, you know, the book box subscriptions, the book clubs, the Lego Club, the teen writing circle, all of those, those are all departmental supplies. Office supplies are just what it sounds, um, that's where our Xerox copies come from, which is a huge expense. Um, the ink is really expensive, so everything like that is included in the office supplies.
Okay.
Yep.
So this is the 20th year of the library?
No, we're getting there, 2006, so we're at 17.
Okay.
But it's getting there.
Okay, I just, I thought I read that somewhere and I thought, it can't be 20 years already.
So when some of these costs went up, like training, travel, meeting and office supplies, because you're actually like physically open and going, you're physically open here and going places. It's hard, cause we don't have 2019, to see what we were doing before the pandemic, so, so that's, is that the case?
Yeah, definitely. We have a really good, um, Association of Rural and Small Library Conference.
Must be exciting.
It's amazing, and it's in a different location every year, and it, it's exactly what our library needs, because we're a small and rural library. So everything that we learn there, we can bring back.
I have a friend who's a librarian, I've heard about those librarian kinds of conferences, and they are actually kinda wild.
It's not like Stu's snickering about.
It's kinda wild, so. And do you know how many you're serving? It says 8,000 residents in the county, how many?
So from the months of July 2022 to April 2023, um, we have 15,603 cardholders, and we saw over 63,000 visitors during that time as well. And we checked out almost 98,000 physical items.
Wow, that's a lot.
Corinne, can you speak to periodicals? This is the subscriptions to newspapers, magazines that hang along the far wall. Do we have an idea of utility of those and should we be using some of this budget for more permanent items or what were your thoughts there?
So we have, um, you know, since the past couple directors, um, decreased that by at least half, um, subscriptions too. We try to do, uh, keep track of in-house checkouts. We'll have a little, you know, post-it note on the magazine saying, if you've read this here, check it. It's kinda hard to tell otherwise, so, um, sometimes we'll make them disappear, and if we have people come in and say, hey, where's that magazine or newspaper, then we'll try to get it back again, but it's, it's, it's been difficult. We've tried digital subscriptions too, and patrons don't really care for that as much, so it's kind of a learning curve still to see.
And then can you speak to the audiovisual materials? Uh, you noted that there was an increase in that. My understanding is that a lot of these programs, um, you know, the, the library gets charged on like a per-use type of, of, uh, thing.
Yes.
And yet our, our patrons are not directly paying for that. They're just, you know, that's just coming out of the budget. You mentioned that you had capped that. Can you maybe delve in just a little bit on, you know, what we're seeing as far as utility rates there and how that might affect?
Yeah, so originally, those streaming services, um, were purchased during COVID, makes sense, right? Couldn't come in, get physical items, so they were hugely pop, popular, but they weren't budgeted for. So once we came back and we were open again, it was like, whoa, you know, this is an expensive, um, subscription. So, uh, looked further into it and I wasn't aware, when I took over, that you could do budget caps on those services, but come to find out, can, so those are in place now. Um, so we'll have more of a handle on those. For those months of July 22 to April 23, we did check out or streamed a total of 7,758, um, that's videos, ebooks, audiobooks, TV shows. So it's a very popular service, so we do need to keep that, um, budgeted for, but now it's in the budget, so we're just kind of.
Is Libby part of that, is that?
Libby is a part of the Sage Consortium piece, so that's, that's along with our consortium of libraries. We all buy into that, so that's not a part of that, that's a different cost.
So when we cap that, is, does that mean, I mean, if, if somewhere midpoint during the year, we hit that, that, that just stops?
It's actually a monthly cap, um, and Canopy specifically is a daily cap, so it's like a few bucks a day. Hoopla is a monthly cap, so, and I kind of tried to adjust the, uh, number of checkouts per patron to kind of, uh, make it better accessible for some people, cause some people were just checking out 10, you know, in one day, and wasn't very fair to others, but I think it's working out.
So you switched to a, a different card system, I think. Do non-residents have to pay for some of these streaming services?
Yes, the Hoopla and Canopy specifically.
Okay, so even though they may have a library card to borrow a book or to use the resources in-house, uh, that isn't charged for, if they decide they wanna stream something, they, will they, how do, how does that work? Do they get?
So they get a non-resident card.
Okay.
And, um, so Libby is available to anyone with a card. Hoopla and Canopy specifically, yeah, you have to have a, be an in-town La Grande resident or pay for a membership.
Okay.
Yeah.
And do you have an idea how much you get from that?
I would say we have around 50 non-resident cards right now. So, and that's, it's $50 individual for a year, $100 for household. I mean, two to $3,000.
But that doesn't prevent a non, and that obviously doesn't prevent a non-resident from coming in, in here to use the free resources.
Oh, absolutely, no, no.
Okay, so we're still serving roughly a third of the county, um, both La Grande and non-La Grande people?
Over 15,000, yes.
Yes. Okay. So more than a third.
Library to Go, is that Libby or is that, that's a difference?
That is Libby, yeah. Um, that's, there's so many different names, and they just phased out Moonlighted Overdrive, which is another, that's what Libby had been called, so it's, it's very confusing, but yeah, Library to Go is Libby, Libby is Library to Go.
Is that one of the, so is that one, is ebooks through Library to Go or Libby one of the things you're needing to cap or?
No, that is through the consortium, so that's included in our overhead fees. That is that one specific line, budget line.
All right, any more questions? Okay, thank you. Mr. Bishop. Economic development. I guess I wanna just point out that this is diff, this is the city portion of economic development, which is kinda connected to the urban renewal district and stuff, but it's not, some of what you're doing here is not inside the district, it's the 70% of the city that's outside the district.
No, yeah, I can't, Mary, I can't, ex-mayor, mayor America's.
You can call him.
70% of his salary is paid by urban renewal dollars.
Right.
So the 70% is the inside the district piece.
Okay, but I was saying that, that, but physically, geographically, the district is what, 20 to 25% of the city? There's 75% of our area that is not in the district, but is what, 20 to 25% of the city? There's 75% of our area that is not in the district, but you do some work in that. And, and this fund is for the work outside of the district.
This includes the work inside the district as well.
Right.
That's, that's the distinction.
It's inclusive of.
Okay. Sorry for that confusion.
That's okay.
Questions?
We actually talked about a fair amount of this when we were doing the urban renewal part, so.
Yeah, we did. So covers it pretty well.
So, uh, the consultants?
So there are a couple of things under consultants that we budget for. Um, 3,500 of that is the urban renewal training, uh, that we just did a couple of months ago. Um, we also pay a consultant to do our annual report. Uh, we pay 5,000 annually to the urban forestry, for work in the district. Um, excuse me. There's also $7,500. Uh, half of that, uh, is carried over from our current work right now in conjunction with Planning Department on our economic needs assessment, um, so that we can justify, uh, potentially bringing in additional, bringing in additional commercially zoned lands. Um, and then there is one other piece in there that we're budgeting specifically for. Uh, we are, have been doing a fair amount of work identifying, um, entrepreneurs, working on our entrepreneur ecosystem. And as part of that specifically, opportunities for small-scale manufacturing. And, uh, we had looked at, uh, working with a consultant this year. Have chosen to postpone that to the coming budget here. So we will be back in the fall, uh, probably October with a more in-depth proposal on a consultant that we'd like to bring in and really develop that strategy.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
What about the advertising? What are you spending the 59,000 on advertising?
So advertising for us is basically recruitment. Uh, some of that is getting out to some of the trade shows and other, uh, recruitment opportunities. Uh, we are looking at, uh, for instance, potentially, um, getting to ICS, the International Shop, ISC Shopping Center, International Shopping Center, uh, conference. Um, there's PNW, which is another, another trade show, uh, looking at potentially getting, um, to at least one, uh, conference slash trade show with the Oregon Manufacturers Association. Um, and then there are some smaller specialty trade shows around outdoor rec technology, small manufacturing, outdoor rec kind of trade shows that we'd like to get to where we can really get out, get in front of some of those potential leads and generate those kinds of opportunities.
Okay. And you're doing that currently too though?
We are doing some of that. We've not done much of that. Uh, some of that has just been scheduling. Um, and again, some of those shows have just been coming back online this year.
Okay.
So, uh, we'll certainly be increasing some of that travel, uh, for those purposes in the coming year.
Thank you.
More questions for Timothy?
Excellent.
All right. Thank you. Planning. I don't see Mike here.
Yeah, I'll cover him. If anybody happens to have any questions.
Any questions on planning? I'm just gonna make a note, we're, we are coming close to the 8:30 mark. So I think when we get through these two items, these two funds, planning and building maintenance, we'll call it quits for the evening and then come back and do enterprise funds tomorrow.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Sure.
Okay. Max?
Just, uh, what's the payback that we anticipate on the 67,000 to expand the city's urban growth boundary?
So currently, if someone walked in the door and said, we need 15 acres to develop a commercial whatever, our answer would be, sorry. So when we look at, as, for a city as a whole, particularly for a city of our size, uh, it's crucial that we have sufficient commercial lands. Uh, we're not going to be a player in heavy industrial. Um, we have some capacity for some industrial growth. Uh, if we could get a willing seller and a willing buyer, we have some heavy industry, heavily, heavy industrial areas that are outside the city and the urban growth boundary that would be a good target. But where we really have a significant need is for commercial properties located within the city's urban growth boundaries or city limits. Uh, absent that, we're not going to be able to continue to, to prosper. And so I can't put a specific dollar amount on it, but knowing that, you know, Miller went in, that's a big chunk. Uh, we've just run out of space. And so in order for us to add more properties on commercial, we have to go through a process to do a needs analysis, uh, to justify to the state, here's what we need to do. And one of the key pieces of that is also being able to identify willing sellers of said ground. Uh, because, you know, we've got a, you know, the truck stop going in where the shell and the Chevron were, we've got a hotel coming in, Commercial Tire took a big chunk of ground out there, Miller's took a big chunk of ground. And so we're really fast running out of anything of any substance. So that's why I think it's crucial, but I can't give you the return on the investment.
Any other questions on planning?
But Robert, if you would like to expand for the people who might not know, where are you looking at the urban renewal growth boundary going to?
Well, we're not looking at moving the urban renewal boundary.
Well, no, I'm sorry, not the, I meant.
Urban growth, but we don't know that. That's part of what we're going to take a look at.
So you don't have any idea which way you're going to expand or which way you can?
I, I think it's premature to, to identify that.
Okay.
Any more? Go ahead, Molly.
Um, the computer system maintenance repair, it, why is it different from what was estimated before? I'm, I'm just curious.
Computer system maintenance? You talking about the?
Is it back to what you were mentioning before?
Your unplanning?
It's 523?
It's lower. It's because of the, the hours that were used because we look at the, we look back a year on hour, hour, excuse me, minutes that were used, um, for IT services. So that's what we base it on. So it'll fluctuate depending on IT services that are used.
Sorry, Molly, I was looking at the wrong line. I was like, there, that's.
Anything else from planning? Building maintenance?
Yeah. And this is one where we had kind of given you that breakdown on, this is the one where we've given you the breakdown and the, and exactly what we were doing, those major items on.
Yep. Questions?
Do you want to do 911 and then we would just essentially finish out with Public Works tomorrow?
We could do that. Yep, that works. So we're gonna do, no more questions. And we've already done building inspection and building inspection reserve. We'll do 911 and then that'll leave us at a nice clean place to start tomorrow. 911.
Chief, what kind of credential does somebody need in order to be dispatcher? It looks like we've got two retirees.
Right. Yeah. As a matter of fact, we're, uh, taking applications now. Um, so you have to be 18 years of age and, um, you know, we have a, an entire series of tests that you have to go through, but, uh, you know, there's, there's not really any credentials that you have to come in the door with. We're gonna provide the training.
You're quite confident we'll be able to fill those positions?
I wouldn't go so far as to say quite confident. We're working hard at it. I mean, you guys know, it's challenging to fill any positions, uh, both private and public sector right now. And I can tell you, the number of applications that we have right now is, uh, you know, not saying that they're not each one of them super valuable, but, uh, it's, it's considerably lower than what I would like to have.
Right. Um, you know, I just, I, that's something I think, obviously is a critical component, you know, for our city's emergency services and choose to fill and the experience that's leaving.
Right. Yeah. 45 years between the two that are retiring this summer.
So, okay.
Appreciate the plug of stress right before the evening ends.
Well, I mean, I, I guess I'm just wondering, you know, if, if, if needed, should we consider, you know, or, or is it possible to incentivize that more if it came to?
The ability to offer hiring bonuses has been adversely impacted by the Pay Equity Act. So the ability to say, we're gonna give a $2,000 bonus for someone, we would have to then compensate everybody with equal experience. So those are, unless the legislature does something to bring those back, we're pretty much stuck with our pay structure, which fortunately we're, we are in process of.
All right. Any question, any additional questions for Chief Bell on 91 emergency?
Good luck.
I'm curious. Excuse me. I'm just curious because I've seen this in a couple places now. How often do, uh, consoles and computer service, what's the turnover? How often do they have to be replaced, repaired?
Yeah, I think I heard a couple of different questions there, Roxy. The consoles are literally like the, they're, they're very specific desk type pieces of furniture that house all the monitors and buttons and all of that. And I think those are over 20 years old now. So not very frequent. Uh, but what we find is that the new updated technology oftentimes doesn't interface with the console. So we have to retrofit and after a while it just becomes, uh, really challenging. And as far as computer equipment, um, you know, it's really very similar to what you experience with any other computer equipment. I mean, we're like three to five years.
Okay. Now are you talking about the module itself or the computer server?
Uh, server, um, we, I want to think that's five to 10 years. Yeah. Does that answer your question?
It does. Thank you.
Anything else?
Steve, if I could just hit on a couple things before we break. Um, so I have, uh, two things we owe you. One, we owe a copy of the urban renewal spreadsheet that we keep that shows what was awarded, what the, what the value of the project. It's a spreadsheet that we provided before, but we'll go ahead and send that out to everybody just so you can kind of see from the beginning of time, uh, how much money we have applied to each project and what the amount was that was identified as the project cost, uh, to kind of get to that. What's the public-private partnership ratio? So we'll get that out to you. Um, in terms of questions from this evening that remain unanswered, we were asked to provide the Parks Rec and Aquatic kind of user data, uh, for programs. So we'll get that and have that for you, uh, when you arrive tomorrow. And then speaking of tomorrow, uh, what we'll do when we get here is, uh, we'll do the roll call and then go right into that quick recap where we'll give you that information. And then the general fund comments. And then the Budget Committee will deliberate and vote on the general fund only. And then, uh, we'll move into, uh, let me look at something real quick.
So I have, I'm, I'm looking at the agenda for tomorrow and I'd ask, do we want to do a motion on the general fund first and then do a review of the enterprise fund?
Yeah, I think, I, I think we could do it a couple of ways. I, I think what we should do is go ahead and do the, uh, public input for the general fund, vote on the general fund, because we've gone through all of those departments. We've, we've done the, the staff portion of that. If there are any questions that come out of any public comment, we could certainly answer those as well. And then vote on that one. And then we can pick up the public works, kind of walk through that and then entertain the public comments on that so that the public has had an opportunity to hear that. Uh, and then get into the deliberations and, uh, vote on the enterprise and other funds.
Okay.
And we'll give you an updated agenda that kind of walks through that.
All right. I've, I've made a note here just in case. Anything else, Robert?
That was it. Thank you.
Okay. So with the, with the committee's permission, I'll, I'll, uh, I'll recess us until tomorrow evening at 6 o'clock when we'll reconvene and we'll have to come. I'll see you all tomorrow night.
Thank you.